Here.
Councilor Borton.
Here.
And Mayor DeVeere is absent, likewise. Councilor Mylan is absent.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda, adoption.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I, uh, I move we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item four, consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move we approve the consent agenda for the council president to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as published. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Burnt?
Aye.
Councilor Palmer?
Aye.
Councilor Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilor Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilor Borton?
Aye.
We're no items. Number five that were removed from the consent agenda brings us to item six, community items presentations. We will begin six A, Department of Commerce Idaho Opportunity Grant Update for Paylocity. And Cameron Ariel is going to kick this off.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a follow-up item that, uh, from a previous discussion that you all had. Based on that conversation, we wanted to invite our friends from the Department of Commerce. We have Bobby Joe Muleman, the director, here with us and her colleague Cindy Lee with us as well. Just to give you guys some background on the program, how it works, um, and some of the behind, in regard to the Paylocity. So, I'll just turn some time over to Director Muleman. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. For coming and being with us this afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, members of the council. As Cameron said, I'm Bobby Joe. I am the director of the Idaho Department of Commerce. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today, um, to give you a little background on how the Idaho Opportunity Fund works and to answer any questions you may have. So, the Idaho Opportunity Fund, it's in statute and it's often referred to as kind of the closing package. So, as we have competitive projects that are looking to expand, an existing business in the state looking to expand, or a new business looking to relocate into a state, sometimes you just need that little extra edge because it is competitive. You're competing against other states. And so, that's really the intent of the Opportunity Fund. It's kind of that closing package. And it is for infrastructure updates. So, road, water, broadband, those sort of infrastructure updates is what the, what the dollars can be used for. And so, in the case of Paylocity, the Opportunity Fund was part of the closing package for them to choose to locate into Idaho. A very unique project. At first, they were in Boise and then decided that perhaps that wasn't the best fit for them and so decided to build here in Meridian. Um, as that process happened, they reached out to the agency asking if the Opportunity Fund would still be viable in a different location. Uh, the director, um, at that time agreed that it would still be viable because it was part of the closing package that brought Paylocity here to the state. Um, so, here we are today. They are up and building. You see them. They're a great investment, a great attribute to this community, and they are ready to, I think, apply for their Opportunity Fund. So, I'm here today just to answer any questions you may have about the Opportunity Fund or the, the agreement. So, with that, I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
It just seems like there was a, by the way, thank you for coming by. It was, uh, great to have you here at City Hall. Got a question for you. It just seemed like there was a gap where it was, no one talked about this Opportunity Fund or the monies that are associated with it. Um, no one knew where it was coming from or who talked to who or, it seems like there was a little bit of confusion, not enough i's dotted and t's crossed. So, I think that's probably the reason why we were needing some clarification.
Yeah, uh, so, councilman, thank you for that question. Yeah, there was a delay. Um, there definitely was a breakdown in communication. Um, you know, we have a timeline that kind of lays out, you know, when they first came to Idaho, when they chose to go to Boise, then when they chose to go to Meridian, uh, then they contacted the agency. The agency then contacted the city. The company then contacted the city and there was a delay, um, in communication. And that is a fact. But for us, you know, we made a commitment to that company and that's why I'm here today. We think that the Opportunity Fund is, their project is a, it qualifies and we want to uphold our end of that. We understand that that takes a partnership with the city.
Right.
And so, I'm not here today to tell you guys what to do, just to answer any questions you might have about the process. As far as we are concerned, the process was good. It was followed. And I think this was a unique project because of how, how it first came about, right? It was first in Boise and then it came to Meridian. So, it, it's not like a normal project where usually they, you know, they site in one spot and you move from there. But absolutely, there was, um, there was a delay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, Bobby Joe, thank you so much for being here. And I worked diligently when some of these came about. And so, I love the fact that we have incentive packages. Um, I am a little bit confused because I understand it was offered with Boise when they thought that Paylocity was actually going to build or actually invest. And now, it's my understanding that they're leasing. So, I guess I'm losing the cohesiveness there of they're putting an investment in, although I am absolutely thrilled that Paylocity, one, selected Idaho and then two, is now in Meridian.
Uh, Chairwoman, thank you. Um, or Councilwoman, sorry, thank you. Um, yeah, so, if you look in the lease agreement, which is part of the Opportunity Fund application that the city and commerce will go in together. So, how it is right now is, yes, Paylocity is leasing, but, um, so, the landlord has paid for the public infrastructure for the parking lot, but Paylocity is paying that back through their 12-year lease. So, they will be paying for those, um, infrastructure updates through their lease. So, the landlord is passing it off directly to them through the lease. And, um, just for record too, um, our deputy attorney general has looked at all of this. I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't fully vetted, um, from our attorneys to assure because there, you know, was a gap and there was, you know, a change in location that, um, it still is, follows suit on our end.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh. Bobby Joe, again, appreciate you, very busy individual. You've got a lot going on over at your department and I think it speaks to the importance of this application that you're here before us today. I think one of, at least one of my biggest challenges to, was always trying to wrap my head around why the city needed to be involved since there wasn't a match. So, can you help? I've, I've never been able to get a clear understanding as to why we have to be a pass-through vehicle for you to send the money to us and us to give the money to Paylocity when state's, I think, very capable of cutting a check to Paylocity themselves. Can you help the council understand why we have to play that role?
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you, councilman. So, it's defined in code by us that we have to, um, partner with the municipality. We do not in any of our grants or incentives give the money directly to a company. It either goes through a city or a county. So, that's defined in code on our end.
Mr. President, and this may be a question then for Cameron or for you. So, this was brought to the council six weeks ago or seven weeks ago. Uh, there was somewhat, I think, a desire to expedite it before the end of our budget amendment cycle. Council voted against that. What, is, is there a recommendation that you're asking us to change, to reconsider, to change our mind, to bring a new application? What's, I appreciate getting some background information, but I guess my belief is that this is probably coming with a request and I'm, I'm not quite sure what that is.
Mr. President. There we go. Uh, Councilman Cavanagh, uh, great question. So, um, this is just for informational purposes. We wanted to make sure you guys had all of the information that you needed, uh, that you had inquired about previously, hence the, the request to Director Muleman to be here, uh, this evening. Uh, really, no, no recommendation at this point. We can talk with, uh, with Bill a little bit more on exactly what would need to be done to proceed. Obviously, there's the, the budget amendment that would be necessary to, to instrument, you know, make that happen. And then also proceeding with the actual disbursement. So, and then, of course, the execution of the agreements. But this is really just, uh, for your information, but no recommendation this evening.
Counsel, any other questions? As, Luke, as you, as you brought up, there were, uh, when presented as part of the budget amendment, there were questions about kind of the, the sequence of events and, and the role of a leasing versus an owner and how that might impact the viability of this being a, an appropriate project for it. But this, I think, my understanding is to make sure any questions that we've got are answered. So, if there's anything else that, because you're probably right, my sense is that there may be a request coming back to revisit the previous decision to try and, you know, create the funding mechanism necessary for this to pass through. So, if there's any questions or concerns with that process going forward or coming back, we've got the subject matter expert here to try and answer those. Um, one of the items that you brought up with the lease, I don't know if we've got a copy of that already. I assume we do.
Mr. President, that should be in your board packet.
Okay.
So, all those agreements, everything should be in the packet.
Okay. And that's, that, that's an important component that in order for a leasing to be an eligible applicant, uh, recipient, that they pay some sort of premium rent to the owner who's paying for the infrastructure. That mechanism was vetted through Department of Commerce to determine it's a viable and appropriate award recipient?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like I said, I would, I wouldn't be standing here if we didn't believe that this, on, on our end, we feel like this is, it, it passes every criteria that we have for any other similar project with the Opportunity Fund. I mean, this is a fund that, this isn't the first award that's been given out. We've given out numerous awards for similar, similar infrastructure updates. So, yes, we are 100% confident that, um, this, this passes all of those criteria.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Mr. President, Bobby. Um, and I guess that's been one of my concerns is looking at the other three that have been given out. They were all done by, um, companies that were actually putting the infrastructure in. And so, um, that's been one that I've been a little bit concerned about regarding setting a precedent for somebody coming in leasing and then turning around and saying, "Hey, Meridian, I'd like this money given to us as well." So, that's why we want to make sure, I want to make sure that it's in the lease, that it's, um, very tightly woven in there, that there is a reimbursement for the company that actually put out the funding for the infrastruc- infrastructure.
Yeah, Councilwoman, and it, it's very defined in the lease and in the application. And, um, I'm not sure what other three you're referring to, other Opportunity Fund awards?
Mr. President, yes, Bobby Joe, there were two for Chabani and one for Go Go Squeeze.
Yes. And each of the projects that have been awarded an Opportunity Fund, I think that's the beauty of this fund is each project is so different. And so, each project has different infrastructure needs. It's set up different. You know, the community is different. And so, they all, you know, it's all for infrastructure. But yes, those were, the Opportunity Fund was used for both of those.
Follow-up. Um, and my big concern was also the, not only who was putting out the money, that this is different, but also that, um, where they came in in the timeline, this seems to have come at the tail end of things instead of really, like, its intent to be a, a closing, but it's also, like you mentioned, started out in Boise and then came over here and it really wasn't anything, because normally it would come before council at that point, but there wasn't a scope of work. It's hard when you're not, when you're dealing with a lease instead of the developer that's trying to get something done.
I understand.
Counsel, any other questions? Remain unanswered.
Clear as mud.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you again for coming and presenting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Cameron, any, anything further to add on that? Or we, we may be seeing this back for further discussion relatively soon?
Mr. President, yes. We'll, uh, take that into account and, um, if, you know, if there's no other questions or concerns, we will likely bring that forward to you when it's appropriate after the, well, the, the beginning of the, the fiscal year.
Okay. Any follow-up questions? Route to you for now?
Please do so, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Cameron. Item number six B, November Whiskey and Pacific Companies Old City Hall Presentation to Talk Timeline and Next Steps. Cameron, you're going to kick this off as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, it's a pleasure to be with you. We have a couple distinguished guests here. We have Caleb Rup and, uh, the other proposers to the RFP that was selected, uh, via the joint committee. And we wanted to invite them here, uh, essentially to kind of kick off a, a reoccurring, uh, update to you all on the progress of their project and how that's going forward. So, we've invited Caleb Rup to, to come and present and we'll give some time to him. And then certainly we can answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay. Thanks, Cameron. Welcome, Caleb.
Members of the city council, thank you for having me. Uh, my name's Caleb Rup. I'm the CEO of the Pacific Companies. We're based in Eagle, Idaho, a 20-year-old company and specializing in housing and mixed-use assets and, uh, all kinds of different developments, including public school buildings. Today, as Cameron said, I, we just wanted to kind of brief you quickly on what we're up to and, uh, the process going forward and what you can expect to see with the redevelopment of the property next door here. For starters, you guys have a process to go through, which is, you know, working on the transfer of the city hall to the MDC. Uh, and that process has got to play out in its own time. But while that is happening, we're busy doing things under the assumption that that's ultimately going to move forward. And so, we're doing our due diligence now. We're, um, going through, looking at, you know, utility lines and, and water and sewer and how we're going to navigate around those. Can we abandon the existing alley? Uh, just those kinds of fundamental development questions that really scope out what it is we can and can't do on the site, up to and including whether or not we can make any private acquisitions of some of the properties that are next door to, to of the properties you guys transferred previously. Um, through the process, we'll be working together on amending the existing development agreement that Josh has with, uh, MDC to incorporate the city hall property. And that process will take what it needs to take. Uh, but my guess is it's probably resolvable this year is what we're currently estimating, based on what city staff thinks and, and the attorney thinks. And so, um, we would be interested in proceeding with demolition as soon as all that got worked out and the transfer happened and working with any existing tenants in the city hall space, the old city hall space that needed time to relocate, et cetera. But essentially, we would take this winter and early spring to work on the programming of the site, get the entitlements all set with you guys, go through the building permit plan check process, get all the designs dialed in, work on sourcing, uh, possible tenants and, and users of the, of the 15,000 square feet of, of retail slash office space. So, those conversations are actually starting already, talking to different businesses that might be interested in coming to the downtown or that are in existing spaces and want to come to the downtown. But ideally, if everything goes according to plan, which I think it will at this point, we don't have any reason to think it won't, uh, we should be able to start construction in roughly May of next year would be our timing. And, uh, five years ago, I'd have told you it would have taken a year to build this building, but, uh, with labor shortages and all the trouble that we have executing anything anymore these days because of just the, the overall busyness of the economy, um, we've programmed in roughly, uh, you know, additional five, six months just to, just to have the space. So, November of, of, you know, 18 months from now would be roughly our target. Um, and so, that's pretty much it. Financing-wise, you know, you, you guys are a high-profile city. A lot of people are interested in what happens in Meridian and especially downtown Meridian. So, we've gotten a lot of inquiries from different contractors. We've got inquiries from banks that are interested in financing the project. We, of course, have a number of banks that do our work currently. But we want to work with all them and see what kind of options we have for financing. The equity is sourced privately. We already have the equity to do the project. It's about a $20 million project and about maybe 11, $12 million of debt and, you know, maybe roughly $8 million of equity. And that's kind of the program. So, um, so that's just kind of a quick update for you. I know I threw a lot at you. You guys have probably read a lot of that before, but if you have any questions, I'll just stop and let you ask those and maybe some things I could think about for the future that you care about being updated on as to what we're doing. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, Caleb, thank you so much for being here. We certainly appreciate it. Um, you mentioned amending the existing development agreement. And I'm curious how that works since I know that there's to be a new entity that's your company in November Whiskey. And one of the things that the committee that made the recommendation was adamant about was that the agreement was with that new joint venture or whatever it was, since all along Josh has even said, "You're responsible for the heavy lifting."
Yes, that's correct. Um, and so, yes, that, the, the amendment would include, uh, a, a new entity that we would be a principal in, as well as Josh's company, November Whiskey, I believe he'll have that same entity in there. I was just meaning like, instead of having, you know, that development agreement sort of hanging out there and then a new one with the city hall property, that they would all be consolidated into one agreement. And I believe that's the direction that, um, staff and, and the attorney are heading now. And we, we support that idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, any other questions?
One question.
Mr. Burton.
Is your partner here? I can't tell that if he's here or not.
Well, I, I didn't recognize him. I would have said no when I walked in, but I, but I discovered him.
He looks so different.
Beyond, beyond the ruffle.
Oh, there he is.
He actually is here. Yeah, welcome. Do you want to introduce yourself? It might be the time to do that. Um, yeah.
All kidding aside, I do have a question. Um, so, when, when, you talked about demolishing, uh, the buildings, whether it's Old City Hall, um, not so much considered, uh, worried about that building because we still have that in the grasp or hand, but the other two properties that November Whiskey owns, what's the timeframe and, um, when those would be demolished, taken down?
So, I think the, uh, what I would say is that we would get the amendment done to the development agreement and get that handled and then right away start demolition. Uh, and obviously just capacity and weather or anything like that that would thwart us, but I don't see any reason why that would happen instantaneously. Also, I would want to check with, um, the MDC folks just about, we would just spend our own money on that and then get, look to get reimbursed from MDC, which is typically how we've done all of our urban renewal agreements previously. We spend the money and do everything and then, and improve our costs and then we get reimbursed from, from the MDC. So, we would do that with our own money right away, basically, as soon as we had the legal issues worked out and everything was buttoned up.
Perfect.
Follow-up. Um, Caleb, I, I just want to make sure that, and you, you spoke very eloquently about it, just making sure that the, all of the legal ramifications, all the, the agreements were taken care of prior to that. You know, take, you know, tearing anything down. And I, I know that would happen. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page with that.
Yes, that's correct. We also have to do some, uh, specific testing. So, every time you tear down a building, you basically have to test for lead and asbestos, no matter what, you know, the structure's condition is and even if it's vacant. So, that is one of the things that has to happen. I don't know if that's happened yet or not. Uh, but that's one of our due diligence items is if it has happened, great, we'll follow that. But lead and asbestos have to be abated on any building. Um, and so, that would be, well, that has to happen first before we can actually tear down.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for either Cameron or Bill then. In terms of terminating our, our lease with the current leaseholder, what does that process look like? I assume that's something we've already began. Be great to get an update on that particular element as well.
Mr. President, members of council, Councilman Cavanagh, I can probably answer that. So, in our current lease with the, um, with the building, uh, property, it's a 30-day clause to terminate. Uh, we haven't, because one of the questions I had for, for Mr. Rup was, when, when would we need to do that? I mean, obviously, it's not really the city's desire to, um, do it so early when it's going to just sit vacant. It's going to get used. So, I think we haven't figured out a, a good timing on that. We would then come back to the council and, and get verification. Are we okay to move forward with doing that? Uh, Mr. Ritter certainly knows where this process is ongoing. So, he definitely is aware that there is a timing. We just, I don't know what the timing of that specifically is going to be.
And I can speak to that if you'd like. I mean, really for us, it's really just so that we can actually start with construction as soon as the nice weather permits us to. Um, so, you know, the buildings can come down as soon as you guys are ready or as late, as long as we're ready to go by April, May for construction start, especially if we get a nice early spring. Want to get as much work as we can get done as early as possible. So, I think if I were just saying what would be ideal, if we could do it in March of 2019, that would be probably a preferred choice, um, for us. Just, just to have it out of the way and make sure we can go unencumbered forward.
I appreciate that piece.
Yeah.
Caleb, one of the, the considerations in, in making that decision, obviously, is the current tenants who Rick is housing, um, who would need to hopefully participate in the discussion of what might work best for them as well.
Yes.
You know, the leases, we understand what it is and we understand what the options are, that, how it might end abruptly and there might be a legal right to.
Yeah.
These are some good downtown, um, businesses who've, who've taken some, some pretty good risks. The Treasure Valley, Treasure Valley Children's Theater is one of them. We, they've reached out to all of us and reminded us, you know, their role in being displaced and still being a big part of our downtown. So, if there's, if there are those decision points on when demolition, for example, could take, having those individuals either through Rick or directly participate in the discussion, whether there's some sequencing of what comes down when and to make it fit the schedule to be timely, but try to be as accommodating as possible to those existing users because they're as important, you know, to this community as you guys certainly appreciate. So...
Yeah. Well, my kids participate in that theater. Uh, we just did our little performance not too long ago. But, uh, um, I got three girls, twins at, at nine and a 10-year-old. So, I, they all had fun with the latest rendition of that. Annie was the latest one, in case you didn't know. But, um, so, I'm totally sensitive to it. We do encounter it all the time in our development world. And, you know, with this project is really a partnership project. I'm being more practical about things. So, if you guys want to wait longer, you know, we just run up against issues, right? If you're starting a project in October or November, you know, you've got winter to deal with. And, you know, the nice thing about this project is we're not pressed to do anything actually on our end. It's not like we're under some urgency to do it. I mean, we're always facing interest rate risks, construction cost increase risk, those kinds of things we're always mindful of. But we do encounter situations. We built a lot of public schools, you know, and, um, we know that some of the, some of the schools that we work with, they're in certain leased facilities and they need to move and stuff. And so, I think it's just a matter of you guys kind of maybe specifying to me what you would like to do and then we can pivot around it. Um, I was really speaking more what would be ideal from a unimpeded way to move forward, assuming that's what everybody wanted to do as quickly as possible. We also are willing to help, uh, work with the community and see if we can source, uh, other locations for folks to be. And that's something, you know, where, where is there vacant space? Where can we find it? We're under construction on a 280-unit apartment building over MacMillan and, um, uh, Meridian. It actually, yeah, MacMillan, Meridian. And we're about finished up there. We have a community room there. There might be some things we can do there, you know, just on a temporary basis to help out. Uh, so, things like that, we're definitely willing to work with the existing users of the building and see what we can do to help make the transition as pain less as possible. We know it's going to be painful either way, but hopefully we can do, reduce some of that pain.
And, and part of that process and the value to those end users, is that certain schedule as, as best as possible, whether it's January or March or if there's a known date that if things are to happen and people plan accordingly to relocate, that they know it's certainly going to happen and the schedule's met firmly.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions on timeline process?
Okay, well, thank you for having me.
Caleb. Cameron, you'd, you would open this with the idea that there may be a recurring update? Is that, is that a monthly, we're assuming going forward? Or it's more frequently?
Mr. President, yes, that's correct. So, in the, in the inception, we're thinking, you know, as things will be moving pretty quickly, certainly with the, the negotiation of contracts and where your input will be necessary to get those right, um, uh, we would anticipate a monthly. But probably down the road, when we're kind of through some of that heavy lifting and it's more into the construction phase, that may, may fade. But yeah, for the foreseeable short term, we anticipate a monthly update to you.
As part of that process, when you're preparing that, to prepare some scope of what's to be discussed, if you, you know, reach out to all of council and maybe gather some inputs? So, if there's questions looming that you know, they know, and everyone can prep up so the discussion's fruitful when, when we're all here?
Correct. Mr. President, yeah, if you have any, any questions, anything that we can, you know, bring to light in advance of, that, that's helpful too. Um, and obviously, as staff, we're going to be working very closely with MDC and, uh, the development team to, to try to make that seamless and as you would like it.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Just, I appreciate having the council from MDC and, and the chair here. I just wanted to give them an opportunity to chime in
if there's anything from the urban renewals perspective that need to, I hate to put you on the spot, but appreciate you being here. And if there's anything from your perspective that you felt we need to know, great. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll move on, then, to department report, 7A. Fire Station 6, our recurring timeline presentation. Actually, no, this is a specific update.
This is a specific update.
Specifically, yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, counsel, good afternoon. We were before you two weeks ago to give you an update on Station 6, keeping to our commitment of communication, transparency, and making sure that everybody's in the loop on where we're going. You're going to get a presentation tonight from our architect, Pivot North, as well as our CMGC ESI. Two weeks ago, we talked about timelines, station move-ins, potential. We're going to present you with two options tonight for you to consider, have a good discussion around, and hopefully, give some direction on. So, a little bit of backstory, we've met with you one-on-one, talking about the timelines and the progress of Station 6. The original timeline we got was January, February of 2020. That accounted for some potential weather, some of those things. We were challenged as a team by the mayor to come up with a secondary timeline for consideration. That was an accelerated timeline. So, tonight, you're going to get that presentation this afternoon. It's not tonight. We're going to talk about pros and cons. We do have the A-team. I think both Pivot North and ESI, under short notice, really stepped up to get this information put together, and that was a pretty big challenge, and they rose to it. So, I know we have the right team in place. I know we do have Keith Watts here from Purchasing, Alex and Dale from Public Works. Want to thank them. I can tell you the paint's not drying on this at all. Charlie is involved every day, either with our architect or our CMGC or with internal city staff to keep this thing moving forward as quickly as we can. So, with that, I'll finish it up. I'll wrap it up when we get done to have a conversation about the information you're being provided and get some thoughts and ideas, and hopefully, some direction on which pathway you would like us to consider. So, with that, I believe, Gunnar, you're going first?
Yeah, I'll go first.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. President, council members, just wanted to walk back a little bit, and you probably have covered this a little bit before with some of the previous logics of schedules and that kind of stuff.
You gotta go ahead, excuse me, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You gotta go ahead and state your name.
Oh, sorry. Gunnar Gladix, Pivot North Architecture.
Thanks, Gunnar.
Okay. So, we have, originally, when we started the project, based on the timing coming out of the programming and concept design phase, one of the key things, or the two key things that we were looking at when looking at that schedule were reduction of risk and reduction of cost. So, looking at how that swayed out to hitting in the winter, looking at some of those costs, we felt that those were some of the biggest risks going into the beginning of that project, which drove our thinking and logic towards, well, let's look at, and also, actually, bidding conditions at the beginning of the year seem to be usually a little bit better. I'll let Nick and John talk to that a little bit more, so they have more experience with that. But we were trying to focus on the two things of reduced risks and reduced costs, and that kind of put us into thinking of starting right after the New Year. Get the bids, get the construction started in the spring. So, that was the driving factor of what we had as a schedule before. And so, now, moving into the adjusted schedule, which is the fast-track schedule, the way that we're going to attempt to do that is to break our design into different packages, submit different building permits to the building department. We'll be releasing different GMP packages, which is a guaranteed maximum price to you, and start construction while still working on design as well.
So, Gunnar, to frame it for us a little bit, the original schedule to have this built in the normal course, with us undergoing the process now, was March 2020, give or take, right, roughly? And the decision point is, what's the cost? Financial cost and quality of service, quite frankly, cost to accelerate that to try and be done October 1 of 2019?
Correct. And we've got the, so I'll invite John and Nick to come up and present some of the costs to you.
Good afternoon. I'm John with ESI Construction, John Martz.
Nick Plats, ESI Construction.
So, as Gunnar touched on, there, we were trying to mitigate risk for the project and the costs associated with that. One of the key things was starting potentially late winter. We identified with the original schedule that we would be going to construction beginning of March. With the accelerated timeline, we would essentially be breaking ground beginning of November, which essentially is the beginning of winter. The costs associated that we have estimated for that would be an additional $125,000 of winter conditions or weather conditions, and that's to basically produce protection for the city and the project against those winter months and inclement weather that we may occur. That essentially, that total previous estimate was $75,000, so that would bump our winter conditions to $200,000, which breaks down to about $50,000 a month. Concerning other costs, I know Gunnar's got some design side as well.
Yeah, so the other piece of that, too, is the breaking out of everything into different packages. So, I, our team worked with our consulting engineers to try to find out what the maximum cost to run the multiple packages through the building department would be. So, we, our number that we thought on the design side would be a maximum of $50,000. And of course, those can be not-to-exceed numbers, and they can be run hourly, so we can pay, the city can pay just for what's needed to complete the extra packages. Some of that will be some overlap in construction administration for looking after construction while designing and some of the additional risks that we confront when we do fast-track projects.
And just to clarify, on the winter conditions, that is an allowance for the project. We will only spend that as needed throughout the project, and we'll coordinate that with the city and Meridian and our representative project manager from the fire department.
Questions?
So, if my notes are right, I think there might be a slide that shows that the financial cost, was it 250, or perhaps not to exceed total additional cost, or is it greater than that, isn't it?
So, for the weather, weather conditions increase, over and above would be 125. With Gunnar's accelerated schedule, not-to-exceed would be a maximum of 50. And then, I believe there was a contingency for the design side that was discussed.
Yeah, one of the other items that we, in a fast-track project, we typically recommend that the owners keep a little bit more contingency on their side for unforeseen conditions that occur due to that process. So, I think we had.
It was, it was an additional 2.5%, so $125,000 for a design contingency was discussed. So, all in, wrapping both weather conditions and design, it would be approximately $300,000.
And if I'm looking at the dates right, rather than completing it February 20th of 2020, it would accelerate it five months to, all things being equal, October 1 of 19?
Correct. So, that's accelerating both design and pre-construction, as well as construction services.
Counsel, any questions yet? There was some of that to some certain degree with other construction projects, and it comes with not only financial risk, but their challenges, as you guys well know more than anybody, in trying to build quicker and during those conditions. Whether, I don't know if you guys can comment on some of the non-financial risks that somebody might have in accelerating construction for a project like this, or perhaps, no, Keith Watts is here. Put him on the spot, if Keith has some comments to.
Yeah.
The ask of us is to give some general, you know, appetite for going faster, at a greater expense. We're not necessarily voting or deciding a path today, but if we've got great comfort in accelerating or discomfort, the chief needs us to, and the mayor certainly needs us to weigh in soon, so. So, that's, in order to make that kind of thumbs-up, thumbs-down thought, it would be helpful to hear what are those, in addition to $300,000, what are the other challenges that we might face in going fast?
So, a couple of the other challenges that we may have, you know, City of Meridian doesn't typically provide separate permits. So, with the split GMP packages, essentially, we would be designing a core and shell site package, placing that in for permit and out to bid for the GMP 1. And then, once reviewed and approved and the notice of proceed is provided, we would start construction and continue with the design of the interior package, which you can see below the dark blue accelerated timeline construction. We have an accelerated timeline bidding GMP 2 package. That would be the interior package. So, effectively, we would be in construction without knowing a verified bid number.
Yeah. You'll have to approve a sub-cost of the first GMP without a final cost of the rest of the work. So, it's just, that's just a risk, you know, that we want to stick within the budget number. We do 50% of the work, the superstructure, and then we have still an estimate number for going into that second GMP approval in the next year, January.
Yeah, the next phase.
So, just one of the other risks.
So, how does that go? When that goes wrong, what happens?
We go over budget, perhaps, because of market conditions or labor or materials, that kind of stuff.
Is there any issue that arises with construction itself?
Not with that particular piece.
Not with these, yeah, not typically. When we do encounter over-budget bid packages on bid day, we'll go out, talk to our subcontracting community, see, talk to them, see what the, what's jumping the price up. We may try to value engineer value analysis on some of the products. Maybe it's a sole-source spec, or, you know, there's just issues with the design of it, you know, that the design team in ESI would essentially vet after bid and either make the decision to provide a deductive change order with an alternative product or manufacturer, or we would talk to the city and recommend putting the package back out to bid to try and build up some more competitive nature for that bid package.
One of the other items that I think we've talked about is usually the CMGC process is a good process, because we can work as a team to maximize the value of the project. So, one of the things that we will have to do if we want to do the accelerated track is to make kind of a final stop decision in a couple of weeks. The plan is it, the building is it, everything, because we've got to go take off to the races and get the drawings done. So, we won't be able to do any value analysis on some of the superstructure items and those kinds of things. We will be able to do that on interiors and finishes and that kind of stuff that comes in that later package, but we won't have the opportunity to get as many value items kind of figured out during that design process of the longer-term one.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Mr. President, and I don't know who wants to kind of tackle this, because this is not my realm, building, but I kind of get the impression that we're asking you to do something that's outside the norm. Is it, like, really outside of the box, or is it just kind of outside of the box? Because it doesn't sound like we're set up to do it. We've got to do something different to accommodate you splitting up permits and stuff.
My understanding, from a constructions and design standpoint, fast-tracking is a normal thing.
Yeah.
We're just responding, whoops, sorry. We're just responding to it, you know, a little later, figuring it out. It's not, it's not a big deal for that. From a policy perspective, I do believe the city has not been doing multiple packages for single projects, so that may be a change that we just need to work with the building department. I have been working with them to see what they need to be able to do that. But, but really, the overall thing is that we just, you know, we're managing scope, schedule, and budget, and if we want to increase the speed, then it, some, you know, it affects budget. So, that's basically the main message.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, keep, Mr. Watts, kind of hinted I might call on you before, but sort of the same question from the city's perspective. What are the, I mean, the pros, we get it five months earlier, but talk about some of the cons before we make a decision of how things might go.
President, board, and council members, that is correct. The CMGC statute that was approved a year, year and a half ago, or a year or two ago to allow us to actually do CMGC, did not take into consideration two GMPs. The process is built for a single GMP, and one of the analogies I use is if you hire a contractor to build or paint the bottom half of your house in a contract, in your second contract, you don't have very much negotiating power to get the second half painted for the same price that you would expect. So, that's just a real basic analogy. And that's, I think, one of the reasons that you typically don't do a CMGC in two phases, although construction is fast-tracked on these folks' end all the time, I'm sure. It's just, time is money. So, if you want to build faster, it costs more. The city's experience with other folks at the helm in the contracting realm, fast-tracking has kind of been disastrous for us in the past. It's cost more money, our quality's gone down, we've had contract issues, we've had lots of other issues. So, our own experience has not been favorable. Like I said, it's with different folks, but that is the city's experience. I think.
Does it, is it just an expense issue, or are there unforeseen, you know, if you've got a value add or the quality of construction problems that can arise if you go fast, faster than originally?
That's what we have, that's what the city has experienced in the past. We have experienced quality problems. We have experienced the lack of being able to do value-added design and negotiation. So, it has hindered us in the past.
I don't ask that to assume there's going to be any problems at all, but just, we seem to recognize those challenges after the fact, and when something's completed, and we don't have the ability to go back and correct it, so.
And the other thing that I would like to add.
Sure.
Not in building construction, in our sewer and water lines. When we want something done, we set a date in the contract and say it has to be done by October 1, and then we put $1,500, $2,000 a day, liquidated damages. If you miss that day, we start reducing the cost of that contract. That's a guarantee to get your contract done in a date that you think, or that you're requesting. If we're just saying we want to move in October 1, and we endeavor to do so, you're going to pay the cost, you're going to take the risk on without that guarantee unless there's something additional. I'm not sure these folks would be all about jumping up and down about signing liquidated damages, but that's how to guarantee a date, or at least put a value on that date. So, you need to take that into consideration as well.
Regardless of where the date is.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel, any questions for Keith? Hey, thank you for adding that input. Appreciate it. Nick? I appreciate the.
Yeah, thank you.
The two paths and the options. It sounds in super simple summary format that it's five months earlier for $300,000.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Chief?
Mr. President, counsel, that was the presentation of what these folks were asked to do, to provide for you. The best way I can describe it is as we moved this project forward several months ago, we had a philosophy of cost over time, meaning cost was a very big significant factor. We know the costs have increased. I don't know if you all saw the Idaho Statesman article about the Boise Fire Projects and the City of Boise, their costs have doubled. We're very conscientious of costs. So, Charlie's been very involved in trying to bring that cost down and get rid of anything we don't absolutely need to get that cost down. Option B presents a time-over-cost factor, so we're going to speed up the time, have a little bit more cost. There is some timing to this, depending on the conversations that occur with this council and the direction that you may want to see us go. The accelerated timeline requires a decision at some point fairly soon to get them moving under the timeline that you see before you on the screen. Sticking to our original timeline doesn't have that pressure. So, as I've looked at it as a fire chief, there are pros and cons to each one, to each option that you have before you. The pros certainly on the accelerated is we move in sooner, we provide service sooner. There's some cons on that accelerated timeline that is a little bit concerning as well from an engineering standpoint, a value standpoint. Going too fast may mean some misses, and that is a little concerning, too. So, certainly, those are pros and cons. We're here to get your input, so I'd welcome it, thoughts, and at some point, direction. I know the mayor's not here, but certainly, taking back to her, the discussions from today's council meeting, today's council meeting. Keep thinking it's tonight.
No worries. One of the sources of this conversation was the earlier frustrations we've had and the process leading up to, before any of this has happened, right? The original.
Sure.
Planning and construction, design, and we've gone over that, and you, to your credit, have kind of owned how things kind of drug out longer than anyone intended, and so we're trying to remedy that maybe on the back end. And one of the hard asks. And, and so we're trying to remedy that maybe on the back end and, and one of the hard asks from the mayor, as I understand it, and I, at least I applaud, the hard ask is let's pick a date, draw it on a board and make it happen. Now, the, the flip side of that is to make informed decisions on what's the cost of doing so. Because you certainly can do it, you guys can certainly make it happen. Um, but going to, into it with our eyes wide open, is the cost worth the benefit? So I love the hard ask to get it done quick and I think it's great that she's done that. Now we need to make a decision if we're comfortable understanding the cost, doing that or, or keep the original schedule. Again, we're not voting on it now, but I think if council would weigh in on what they do or don't have heartburn on, that'll help steer a conversation and follow up for next week.
Yeah, for us in the fire department, depending on the conversation, the, not the vote, but the direction, it, it creates a timeline for us depending on which way we go, for sure.
Any thoughts from council on those options?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cather.
Chief, I kind of echo Councilmember Borton's comments. I, I think you guys kind of read some of the challenges or the frustration that were coming from council and you and the mayor said, what can we do to try and address some of that? So I appreciate, appreciate the team bringing, giving us some, some options. To a degree, I look at you as the subject matter expert and, and I appreciate you coming and asking for some direction from council, but not to flip it back at you, but I'm, I'm curious, do you have a recommendation? And I, and I say that, you and I have had some very spirited conversations where we talk about calling our shot and what happens when we, when we miss it. And to Councilmember Borton's point, if we're putting a date on a board, man, we got to make sure we're hitting that date. And I don't want our citizens to come back and have spirited conversations with us, the council and the mayor and you saying, why didn't you make your, make your date? So I'm, I'm curious if you have a recommendation as, as the chief of the department that, that you would like to at least share with us, so we're, we're taking that into consideration.
Uh, I can share with you my concerns. Do I, do I have a, one of those two dates? To be honest with you, I'm not a builder, never have been in my life. So I do rely on the subject matter experts to say, if we did X, we can expect Y. If we did Z, we can expect A. My biggest concern going into an accelerated timeline is not to shortcut anything. Uh, this project is worth taking the time to make sure it's done right the first time, that, that we don't have any shortcuts. And I, I brought that as more of a home builder. We built, my family and I built three homes over the course of our years and there's certainly things that you want to make sure when the walls go up, they're straight and when the sheet rod goes on, it doesn't crack. Um, so that was, that was my biggest concern with an accelerated timeline, are we going to miss something? My other concern with it, uh, and you heard about the two GMPs and that process, uh, I, I've become type A in this project enough to know I'd like to come before you with a guaranteed maximum price on the entire project. And the accelerated timeline does not offer that, so we would have to go into that eyes wide open. Um, if you ask me, is it better to get firefighters in a fire station sooner, I would say absolutely. I think we all could agree to that. Um, but as far as the project's itself and the quality of work, I would probably lean towards the other. Hope that, that was a total political answer.
Clear as mud.
Wow, that was.
Make a great city council member.
I'm getting good.
Mr. President.
Mr. Palmer.
So clearly we've got three factors to determine here. Time, money and quality of risk mitigation. Um, the only scenario that I, and to me, all, all three should be considered equally and considered equal. Um, and the, the only scenario that provides for two of those is the original timeline. Um, so to me, two-thirds of the three equal option, equal considerations are covered under the original, so that's where I lean. Not lean, that's whatever's a little bit stronger than lean. Firmly on that side.
Okay. Councilmember, or Mr. President, sorry.
I think if, if we didn't have a scenario that would have Station Six being able to be operated out of Station One at least temporarily, we've got the truck on order, we've got the staff, feel confident in their ability to be able to manage any challenges that are in front of them from an administrative level. Uh, I don't see that the, our taxpayers get a strong ROI on the expenditure of, of three hundred thousand dollars to get the station opened up a few months earlier. Um, this is a station that's going to be in our community for a long time. Ten years from now, nobody's going to recall that we got the station open three months earlier. I haven't heard the compelling administrative case for getting it open sooner. In fact, quite the contrary, we've heard many of our staff really voice some tepid concerns about if we accelerate, what that could do to the overall quality of the project. So I know we're not making a decision now, you're looking for, for, for recommendations. I'm, I'm supportive with keeping the timeline as is, but appreciate your due diligence as the chief and as the team to come back and at least give council the opportunity to consider something different.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
So it seems as though that, you know, we all know that this project is behind schedule. And I think that there's been a lot of heartburn because of it, not only from this council, but from those, all those who are involved, um, from citizens, from different stakeholders and those who have been watching this project closely. I feel like, you know, we've, um, asked for an expedited assessment solely for the means of, well, we can do it quicker, but then it's going to cost more money. And I just, I, I just, it's really hard for me to wrap my arms around that, to be honest with you, especially since it's in the middle of winter time. And so the, the greatest unknown isn't necessarily a cost factor, but it's mother nature. And if there's someone in this room that can guarantee me that this is going to be a mild winter, then we can go into business together and we'll make a lot of money. It's just, it's just not, it's just not going to happen. There's just nothing, no way you can tell what's going to happen with, you know, Snowmageddon or, you know, something similar or even something in that realm that would, you know, uh, cost more money, but then we may not even get in at that timeframe because of unknowns. And it certainly would cost a lot more than three hundred thousand dollars. And so with, with the, with the fact that there are no guarantees with the expedited process with, and with what was stated previous to, we haven't had a lot of success in these type of projects. I would probably lean more toward, let's stick to the timeline, let's get it right and, you know, go from there.
Mr. Burton? Any other comments? Any other leanings?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, yeah, given the information, and thank you so much to the team for coming in and, and putting this together for us and things. Um, yeah, I lean towards sticking with the original timeline. Trying to move it up with, hopefully we'll have a very mild winter and things will be able to run smoothly, but depending on mother nature, we could be at a complete standstill anyway. So, um, I kind of lean, since we're talking leaning, lean toward leaving the regular timeline.
Chief, you've got some, some consensus on direction.
That's what I hear.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think it's great, again, valuable information to have. I appreciate the team putting this together of these options. Um, I don't necessarily, knowing now the cost, that it would outweigh the benefit and, and, uh, this is a long-term asset we want to have done right. So.
Well, counsel, I think we've, we've, uh, heard you. Um, we'll take that back to the mayor when she gets back, but I think as of now, we'll continue to move down our, our previous timeline, uh, unless it's, uh, comes back to you for another consideration.
Yep. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Oh, yep. Mr. Watts.
I, I just had one more comment or just a reminder. Um, I know we, we talk budget and we talk construction estimate back and forth. I just wanted to remind council that we do have a budget of three point nine. So if we, uh, I wanted to talk process for a few minutes. If we move forward with the original concept, the team would con, uh, complete design, uh, ESI would go ahead and go ahead and finish their bid project and put together a GMP amendment to bring back to the city prior to that. At, during that same meeting, we'd have to do a budget amendment prior to the amendment because we can't ask for a contract, we have no funds allocated for. So we would need to do a budget amendment for the difference of the three point nine and whatever the GMP comes in, and then we would, uh, execute the GMP.
You don't, well, then we'll talk about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Keith.
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
And we're comfortable with setting a date, a move-in date of January thirty first, two thousand twenty, today. Why is everyone laughing?
It got really quiet. We're not perhaps there yet, but. Any, any other comments on Fire Station Six? Okay. Thank you again for coming, I appreciate it very much. Hopefully that's helpful direction. Um, seven B, citywide strategic plan update, which would normally be presented by the mayor, um, but as you know, she's unable to attend, is out of town, and so Vincent gets the laboring oar and will provide some update. Um, I talked to the mayor a little bit about it and at least the structure of this and it, it sounded as if this is happening every six months and the spring one, the spring update will include the, the red line, um, so to speak, of the objectives. Here's what's been completed, here's what's been removed, here are the dates of completion, here's what's been added or proposed to be added and the living document changes in the spring and then this is the, the mid-year update of how that is progressing. So things aren't necessarily coming on or off right now, but you're going to provide some context as to what's, what's moving on the direction you got in the spring. Fair summary?
Absolutely. That sounds about right.
Take it away.
President Borton, members of council, um, from the mayor's office, um, I just want to pass on our, um, sympathies and, uh, thoughts and prayers to the mayor on her current situation and, um, that, you know, we're, we're just with her and, you know, we're thinking about her as, right now, so.
Hey, Vincent. We're going to have you get that mic right up close to you.
Close. This one?
Either one, so everyone online can hear and watch.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Much better. Thank you.
So today's going to be an opportunity for a status update on our citywide strategic plan. We're going to cover the, uh, total objective, uh, completion status. We're also going to talk about our, our tactics and overall completion since last March. Uh, we're going to have our departmental closeouts. There's a couple that are being closed out today that we're going to report on. Those department people are going to be, uh, reporting on that. We're also going to report back on a couple of follow-up, um, objectives that we said we'd bring back every council meeting. And then we're also going to report back on our high priority updates and then any next steps or questions you might have. Um, I'll try my best to answer any questions you might have on those objectives. I also have some people in the audience to help me out with that. And hopefully we don't have to do that and if, you know, if we got questions that we need to be answered, I'll have the mayor, you know, come back to you at that point. So let's move on to what we're going to be doing today, so. So first thing I was wanting to talk to you about would be our current progress on our objectives. We're currently nineteen percent complete. We've completed total of twelve objectives in our strategic plan out of the sixty-two. Last October, when we reported, uh, we were at six completed strategic objectives. And so, and also in a, in addition, we have nine strategic objectives that are due, uh, before the end of the year. So in February, when we do that update, we should have a significant amount of, uh, strategic objectives to report completion on and explain how our performance measures are being met on those strategic objectives. Next slide is the total plan completion. This represents the total of three hundred and seventy-four operational tactics that are involved in the completion of the strategic plan. We are currently sitting at forty-four percent complete of the strategic plan tactics, uh, twenty-two percent are currently in progress. Uh, last March, we updated you at thirty-six percent and from almost a year ago, we've, uh, gone from twenty-two percent to forty-four percent complete in our tactic status report. As I mentioned before, we're going to have closeouts and follow-ups. We have, um, two that are going to be recently closed that the departments are going to report back on. Um, you've also asked previously as council that, uh, we report back on the urban renewal district, one A two, and two A two, the, uh, broad spectrum of partnerships to, um, needed to cultivate businesses and jobs. So we're going to report back a little bit on that. Brenda had also covered a little bit of that information at one of the previous council meetings a few weeks ago, so I'm not going to reinvent the wheel and cover everything she covered, uh, but I will give you a little bit of, uh, a few nuggets that, uh, are, are additional to that, so. So one A two, um, a couple of things that we wanted to highlight on the urban renewal district, um, of some of the occupied properties. Um, we've got primary health that's open since the last March update, um, Epic Shine Car Wash, um, Ten Mile Creek Retail, Palosity and Horrocks Engineers totaling almost ten million dollars worth of permit value at that time. Also got a little bit of information about some of the things that are in progress that you might find interesting. Um, two hundred and forty unit lofts are underway. We have, uh, the Palosity building is currently seventy-five percent leased. The Magellan building, which includes Brighton, is twenty-five percent pre-leased. We also have the Ameribin expansion, uh, which is going to include a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of additional space and Ameribin will occupy ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of that facility. Uh, there's going to be initial new Class A office building that's going to be the east of Palosity upcoming, um, eighty thousand, a hundred thousand square feet, uh, square feet on that. There's also a cool gym and wellness center, uh, ten thousand square feet. We partly partnered with, uh, Christian Armstrong, uh, which should open in March of twenty nineteen. And I, that's about all I have on the information on that one, but it should be pretty interest, interesting. So, uh, in total, there's a perspective of two hundred and sixty thousand square feet of prospective tenants in the Ten Mile area in those new buildings. Um, so a significant amount of, um, of business activity that will be going on in the urban renewal district. Two A two, I mentioned that, you know, Brenda covered some of these things. This is to develop and maintain the broad spectrum of partnerships needed to cultivate diverse jobs and businesses. Um, we're going to talk about, I'm going to talk about the performance measure one, uh, which is to maintain and expand the membership of the Meridian Economic Development Steering Committee. Um, Brenda and Cameron both mentioned to me that, um, they're going to be using the ready team that was previously mentioned to, um, assist in the implementation of the targeted industry analysis that's taking place. And, uh, they're going to use the ready team to provide feedback on those targeted industries, uh, that they, that we come up with from Logan Simpson, um, from the consultant and the, um, the enhancement that was brought forward. And so they're, they're going to be using that ready team in the economic development steering committee to provide insight and, um, additional feedback on the targeted industries and how we should proceed in using those. Uh, this, these, this is kind of new, we didn't do this the last time we presented, but, um, talked with the mayor and we had a few completed objectives that had some changes that we'd like to report back on and/or, um, you know, just important information that council should be aware of. So, um, on four D two, the develop of a comprehensive, family-focused health and wellness program for city employees. Um, there's a, a federal court ruling that vacated, uh, some of the provisions that have to do with our, uh, wellness, wellness incentives that we currently, uh, put in place. Uh, in response, we had to change the way we do our biometrics and health risk assessments. And so they, they made a couple of changes with the health and, uh, wellness benefits committee. They're going to cease and decouple the wellness benefits from the decou, from the, the medical plan and the committee is going to remove the monthly premium discount just tied to the biometrics and then give it to everyone. Now, it's, it's not going to be a substantial cost difference because only about five percent of the city employees were not taking advantage of that discount. Uh, but wellness works is an important part of our program for the city and they're making, they're making additional, HR's making additional, um, meetings in the, in, in the departments to talk, talk to the employees about the importance of wellness, even though it's now no longer coupled with taking and doing the incentives. Um, so if, if you have questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them, but, uh, we don't, I don't have an exact cost on, on that, but it's fairly minimal because most people were already participating in that fifteen dollar discount in the program. Let's see. Oops. Go back. And then on five C one, research and identify a, um, catalog of long-term funding mechanisms and contributors for supporting arts and culture. Got a little bit of an update on that from Hillary and CJ. So during the past, past year, the arts, uh, Idaho, um, Commission on the Arts budget was reduced, so they've suspended their public arts grant opportunities for the time being. No estimate on timeframe for reinstating, however, the Meridian Arts Commission will keep a close watch on additional grant opportunities and partnerships to help with upcoming installations. So I just want to make your word of that. Now I get to hand this over for a couple of minutes. Come on up, Dave.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Uh, council president, council members, happy to be here today. So I have one slide to go over with you and it is objective three C three, develop and implement technological and communication contingency plans. technological and communication contingency plans and programs for continuity of city operations. Quite a mouthful. What we did over the last year was we updated our disaster recovery plan. We met with each department and prioritized needs, and categorized those into recovery point objectives and recovery time objectives. And then we worked with the mayor's office, Casey Emery, to develop an outwards communication, or outwards-facing communication plan, which, quite honestly, she did most of it, which was great. And then we developed a vendor assistance plan. So moving forward, you see a few performance metrics that we have up on the screen in front of you. I'm going to cover a few brief acronyms here, just for your information. You'll see RTOs, RPOs, and RTAs on here. RTO is recovery time objective, which is how much time it takes to actually get service available again. RPO is recovery point objective, which is how much data loss can we sustain? And then RTA is recovery time actual. So what do we actually do when we had some situation happen? So our goal, as you can see here, is to do regular updates to our disaster recovery plan, and then actually exercise it on a regular basis annually. When we do that, we'd like to see that our recovery time actuals meet or exceed our objectives on both the recovery point and recovery time. If they don't, then we need to communicate with the department and reevaluate. Hey, do you guys need something tighter than what we have right now, or what we're able to meet? Or do you, what we have, does that work for you? If it works, then great, because that means it won't cost us any more money. But if it doesn't work, and they need something better than what we have, then we'll have those discussions and figure out where we need to go. Those are our measurables that we have, and we'll be checking on those annually, every year. As it currently stands, we, because we're implementing this year, we didn't have a true exercise, because we were still in the implementation phase of the disaster recovery plan, but we have had at least one issue where we had to revert a system back to a backup, and our recovery point objective and recovery time objectives met. One met, the other exceeded what the department requested. So that is what I have to report. Any questions?
Dave, is there, on this one, when you, when you, a plan is developed, is there even, like a document that is adopted, that kind of outlines the internal operations to accomplish this recurring task?
Yes. We have a plan in IT that we developed to go through. The actual updating of it is actually in our ticketing system, so it just creates an automatic reminder for us annually, saying, hey, you need to go do this, and it's assigned to somebody to work through. But as far as the actual recovery steps, we haven't documented that, because it changes pretty often. I mean, depending on a system, it could vary from system to system. But the overall standard operating procedure for everything and how we're handling it is documented.
Okay.
I was not asked to present that to council, but I do have that if you're interested in it. It's a very exciting read.
I only ask because there's some of the objectives that we have, they at least initially talked about, you know, supporting, you know, disaster recovery. Well, using language like that, you never accomplish the objective, when actually the objective is to establish a kind of a finite plan and process to ensure ongoing X, Y, and Z. And I know, HR, we talked about it with, you know, compensation and benefits. Well, you're never done doing that, but you perhaps create some structure to a plan that that objective can be completed, and then implemented year over year.
And that's what we did. We created a structure to say, hey, look, here are the systems, here are each department's needs for recovery times, recovery points, so that we can make sure we align with that. And then we said how we're going to accomplish that. In this case, it's some technology that we have, that's part of our main backend infrastructure. We make sure we apply that when we bring new things up. We go and exercise it annually. That's usually on our big desk, DR day, where we actually will take systems offline. It's usually early in the year on a holiday, because we take down a lot. And then from there, we just go through and execute, update it annually, so. But like I said, happy to share it if that would be of value.
Counsel, any questions?
Vince, do you want me just to take this away?
You can do it.
I think I'm going to. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm the next slide up here, and I'll just do it from my seat right here. Let Vince stay seated. As you can see on your screen, Objective 5C3 is about connecting and promotion of the arts in the community. And so Hillary really has done a lot of work with the commission over the past year to accomplish this particular objective. Some highlights and some notes, you can see the two performance measures there. The first performance measure is around a showcase event that's held annually, and the second is about educational information. So in regards to that first performance measure, this past week, we just had Art Week here in Meridian, and so that satisfies that performance measure. We feel like that is a showcase event every year within the city of Meridian. It's finding its sea legs, and every year will continue to grow and to improve and to get better. But that is performance measure one. The second, about educational information, a promotional plan has been developed under the helm of Hillary and the Arts Commission, and to Councilmember Borton's question to Dave just a second ago, yes, that is a document that lives and breathes within the clerk's office. It is essentially a checklist of sorts, that when new art is installed within the city of Meridian, kind of a checklist is gone through to say, new art has been installed, now how do we inform the community? How do we connect the interested parties that want to know about art and art opportunities in the Meridian? How do they know about that? And so it's kind of a rundown of how we get the message and the word out about new art being installed within the city. Now, some other items of note on this particular objective. Hillary, the Arts Commission, together worked with Dave and his team to create a digital art map, a story map, if you will, of all of the art installations within the city that is on our website. It is currently live. It's in the Meridian Arts Commission section of the website, so you can see all of the art installations within the city. And that was created with, like I say, with Dave and his team. I believe that, looking at my notes here, is all, as it pertains to this objective, I do want to note, and Dave kind of alluded to it, and you as well, Councilmember Borton, that we believe that this particular objective, while it may be done and checked off for the time being, really is kind of a living and breathing objective, that has new opportunities, and it relates to the funding mechanisms that Vince talked about earlier, as it relates to arts, that there are changes throughout the year, that now we have a promotional plan in place, but it's just been implemented, so now we need to measure its effectiveness, and we haven't done that yet. And so in the next iteration of the strategic plan, perhaps this objective comes back tweaked a little bit, because it continues to live and breathe and grow as the city grows, as art opportunity grows within the city, that while it's checked off now, it doesn't mean now we're done with it. It just means now we're working the plan. So I just wanted to throw that out, and let council be aware of that as well. And I'll stand for any questions you might have.
CJ, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent, who's next?
Thanks, CJ and Dave. Appreciate that for the valuable information on that. All right. This is the meat of the presentation here, so. High priority updates, so we're going to update council on all our previous high priority items. We're also adding in two new exciting items. The objectives of 3D2, performance measurement, and 3D3, continuous improvement. So we'll report back on those as well. We did not previously report on those, because they were not in progress. All right. 1A1, this is reinvigorate the destination downtown plan, gaining broad and strong support and positioning the plan for implementation. So a couple of current efforts and highlights that I wanted to talk about on that would be, the Pine Avenue corridor is nearly complete. I think there are some cars still going down, even though it's closed, but, you know, that's okay. Old City Hall approval and subsequent developments currently in motion. We've set meetings, I believe Cameron set some meetings with DeChase, in order to continue momentum and build on more developments, and if you had anything to add on that, Cameron, maybe at the end, we can, you can let, know what the process is on that. Couple ongoing actions related to this objective. One, we're also looking at, Cameron and Parks are looking at potentially bringing a marathon through this center of town at some point in the near future. Also, the Main Street market just completed, so Colin's going to be meeting with some key stakeholders, and conversations with a potential partnership with MDC, but I can't really allude to that, because he hasn't had the meeting yet, but he'll be bringing that back at some point in the near future. The summer interns created a downtown database of businesses in order to assist in creating better events, and look for gaps in businesses as we look to expand and promote downtown activity. I know the, were those the summer interns that, for the work-life skills that came in? Staff and MDC are currently developing incentives/disincentives to spur developments in downtown. Cameron is also going to be following up with MDC on any tactical envisioning changes with the MDC and Ashley, to see if they need to make any visioning or tactical changes to the destination downtown plan. MDC is also, also has an application underway with Union Pacific, with the pro-bill property, with more updates to follow on that. And so at this point, we're on track to complete that objective by the end of the year, but may require a little bit of lifting on, you know, MDC's part to see about the destination downtown plan. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add on that, Cameron?
Mr. President, appreciate Vincent's help with kind of the documentation and follow-through on this, but I think a lot of what's going on is really exciting down there. A lot of these things are in various stages of progression, some of them very infantile. I mean, you mentioned, you know, the potential of Marathon, things like that. They're more of a, you know, conceptual stage, but then you also have things like, you know, the RFP, Pine Avenue, those types of things that are, you know, further along in their progression and almost to completion. So we're just excited, bottom line, with all that's going on in that regard, and obviously, you know, your support of a lot of these things, and making that a priority really, you know, makes our work that much more real and focused. So we just appreciate the ongoing support in this regard particularly. So look forward to reporting back ongoing with these items.
Okay. Any questions on this objective?
Any questions? No, it's a quiet, quiet afternoon.
I like it. All right. 1B1, this was one that was tied significantly to the comprehensive plan. We previously reported that this was at zero percent completed, is currently fifteen percent complete. Most of it's aligned with the project timeline with the consultant, and so many of our strategic objectives, more than I can count, are actually attached to this objective, and because of its completion, we'll see substantial completion going forward. So now that this one's in progress, we'll see a lot of other strategic objectives moving. Logan Simpson has currently audited our plans, studies, and policies related to the comp plan. Logan Simpson is also assisting currently in creating and defining our market goals, and will be doing that as part of the comp plan exercises. Phase one, the foundation was complete a few months ago. Fifteen hundred people participated in either in-person or online with the surveys. Phase two is currently in progress. It should be complete in October. About two hundred and fifty people have participated in the visioning survey, with more to come with the additional events that are upcoming with Meridian Business Day and Community Block Party. Phases three and four should take about twelve months, and so this objective should wrap up close to November of next year, and with the comp plan draft and potential adoption at that point. They're also going to be doing the SWOT analysis and market analysis, which should be complete around November, which will inform our targeted industries and other programs. And again, this objective should be completed in November of 2019. 1C1, codify established areas of impact boundaries. This one has been moved out significantly because of just little progress on the areas of impact. I know Bill Neri is working with Jerry Mason over the pros and cons, and looking into a path forward with AIC, and possible legislative solution with this particular objective at this point. So it's moved out at this point, probably until at least this legislative, if not the next legislative session for completion, because of the lack of progress that we've had at current on this one. So don't have much else to add on that, but that's kind of where we're at, reality, so. And 2A1, identify, develop, and utilize tools needed for the successful attraction or retention of jobs. Brenda had mentioned to you a few weeks ago that she had been looking at incentive packages, but they will also be aligned with the targeted industry analysis, and I think CJ is passing that out right now to you guys, just to give an idea. I don't know if any of you have seen these yet, but this is her current marketing package that she's created. We also, I also wanted to just provide a brief update, because Brenda was mentioned at last time in the strategic plan update, that the opportunity zone, if you're unaware of where it is, the new opportunity zone that was created by the tax cut package in 2017, is the area bordered by Meridian, Cloverdale, Fairview, and I-84. And investors in that area will receive tax incentive based on the project or investment, i.e. deferred capital investment, capital gains reduction, or appreciation exclusions. Some of the next steps in this, and this objective is tied pretty much to the targeted industry analysis as well. You'll see a pattern with that on a few of these. But this one, along with the relationship management software that Brenda's been looking to use, will make this objective substantially complete. The relationship management software is called Executive Pulse, and she provided a couple of benefits to me about tracking business relationships. If any of you have used Salesforce, it's very similar to that, but it's got a very expansive, open market, so you can really, you can really get a lot of information about it, and various stakeholders can get the information in real time. And it's got professional reporting, data sets, and metrics that are essential to Brenda and economic development's, you know, overall viewpoint, and, you know, what they're able to provide to both the mayor and potentially the council on the activities that she's working on. And that one's due to be completed in 12/18, so that's one of those nine objectives that should be complete this year, based on those, the industry analysis and the software implementation. And 2A3, the only tactic that's left on this one is tied to the industry analysis, the analysis that Logan Simpson is doing. So there's not much to say about it, other than Logan Simpson will be doing the targeted industry analysis, a professional SWOT, and they will not only be doing the SWOT analysis, but implementing it and including it with, in conjunction with comprehensive plan update. So they can take into account transportation planning, infrastructure, and also trending industries moving forward, so they can make a better assessment of what we're going to need to look at as far as targeted industries, and integrate them into the comprehensive plan. So again, this one should be substantially complete by the end of the year as well. So, and again, this is dependent on the industry analysis. 3A2, improve citizen access to government. This one was seventy percent complete in March, now ninety percent complete. We have our telephone town hall slated for September. Robert has developed an implementation plan that is currently being executed. We also have drafted performance indicators to assess how we're doing as far as our outreach strategies to the public. The enhancement timeframe with the software implementation has run into a few challenges because of lack of qualified individuals that are able to implement and execute the software. So we'll bring that back, and we'll also have a discussion about, and bring back information found in the September town hall at a later date. This one is due for completion in March of 2019. 3B1, develop a cost-effective and competitive benefit plan. So this one was previously reported at sixty-five percent, we're currently ninety-five percent. Apparently have important updates. This one should be completed by the end of September, so it was close to being completed before this presentation, but it's still got a few things to work on. Benefits, our benefits committee completed a guiding principles activity, mission and vision statements for our benefit process. Mercer provided a timeline and a strategic roadmap, which will influence and continue to guide our benefits process going forward. And the benefits committee will evaluate that roadmap yearly, on a yearly basis, to determine what our benefits future will look like. So as soon as that, as soon as that is evaluated by the benefits committee, this objective will be completed, but again, it will have ongoing implications with the plan and roadmap that's been created with the assistance of the HR department and our consultants. 3B3, develop- 3B3, develop a succession planning program. This one was previously reported at 15%, we're now at 31. Succession planning groups 1 and 2 have been identified for key critical positions. Group 3 is nearly complete with only one department left. This, all key critical positions will be due by September 21st, so the remaining components can be completed, and data will be analyzed, and individual programs will be established for those key positions for the succession planning program in the city. This one is set for completion in October as well, so, once that final department finishes, they can complete the rest of the analysis and implement the key positions and, and their associated plans to those key individuals. 3B4 is develop an employee engagement program. This one was 10% complete in March, now 40% complete. Recently completed our citizen survey. Review of existing engagement programs has been conducted and completed. The mayor, the mayor has also reviewed our existing identification programs and any modifications that have been recommended, and the leadership is currently looking at those modifications at this time. And so, that's where we're at. That one's not due for completion until early 2020. 3B5, develop and maintain a competitive compensation program that enables quality recruitment and rewards and encourages high performance. On this one, it's at 10% complete, but a lot of the, a lot of the components of this are towards the backend of the objective, so this one hasn't shown a lot of movement, but there is work that's being done inside of it. The market review and wage increases was completed and recommended for the fiscal year FY19 budget. Our police step plan was recently completed, fire wage study, and then year two of the internal alignment from HR was recently completed. Final year alignment review, and then the exit interview analysis is currently in progress. The compensation committee is meeting in October to discuss changes and review data gathered by HR and the consultant, and then changes recommended will be brought forth to leadership for review. This one is estimated to be completed sometime early in 2019. Okay. This, this objective, 3D1, is align resources, systems, and employees to meet strategic objectives and priorities. In the past 11 months, as I mentioned earlier, we've moved from 22% complete to 44% complete on the strategic plan. We will be, I'll be working with the department directors on a gap analysis that will allow us to complete the remaining strategic objectives on time with the necessary resources that the directors believe are, are needed to complete those objectives. At that point, I'll develop a plan to address gaps with policies, budget, and revise staff responsibilities if needed to complete the remaining strategic objectives in the next two years. That'll be complete when the strategic plan's done. 3D2, this is one of the new ones that was being reported on. It's 0% complete, but there has been some work done on it. I currently have been working on assessing the current environment, gathering data, and evaluating current processes, asking departments what their version of premier looks like, what's not so premier in those departments, and then what their, what their top priorities are for some of the data they want to collect and evaluate in the department for their operations. We've also been discussing short midterm and long-term goals on those, on those success, and what the success points look like, and then we're also building capacity for data and what will be tracked, what success looks like, what we need to test still, so that's kind of in the, the initial phases, but should have substantial completion on that by the end of the year, developing those initial pilot performance, performance indicators, performance metrics. Some of the departments a little further along than others, but we'll provide some more updates on that, probably in the next strategic update in February. 3D3, develop a citywide continuous improvement program. This one was 0% complete, has started recently, partially due to the investment we made in the, in the PEAK program with Brian Elms and, and our continuous improvement process. PEAK was used in Denver to realize multimillion dollars' worth of savings, and, and not just in like lean systems or other process improvement techniques, but used a variety of different methods to, to determine whether or not a process was efficient, effective, or meeting the needs of the community. And so, this one's going to be, you know, long-term, long-term investment. We've, with the, with the PEAK training that we're, that we're going to be doing upcoming, we're going to train additional 25 individuals in what we already experienced. I know, you know, Ann's already been through that, and a few others, the leadership team found a lot of value in that. We're going to have an additional 25 individuals trained in the same process, and then Brian Elms is going to come back and train a set of trainers, so we can train our own people on how to do it, and eventually, we will, we'll have a whole team of continuous improvement and change innovators in our city. So, I look forward to that, to that, that piece, but, so that, we're also currently evaluating contract reviews as part of a process improvement evaluation, you know, kind of alluded to some of the things we were talking about earlier with, with the fire project and a few of those other capital projects that we've, we've been working on, but more to come on that, but we're currently doing a process improvement evaluation on some contracts, so, so come back to that at a later, at a later date. I'm almost done, homestretch. All right. 3E4, institute a priority-based budget system to meet the adoptive level of service expectations. This one was 50% complete, now 55. Brad Purser's been working with the support departments and have completed the cost of government initial stages. Currently, he's working with Parks and Rec on drafting their programs. Essentially, what he's doing is identifying what programs people work on, what processes people work on, what they spend their time on, and then associating that with the costs of the personnel in the city. So, you know, those are some of the initial steps in the, in the cost of government program, so he's currently working with those departments, and will move in some of the larger departments in the, in the near future. 4A4, deploy programs, identify gaps to enhance the community's perception of public safety. This is the police objective that was reworked in March, so, you know, we completely changed this objective to make it more achievable and more meaningful. Couple key highlights, the Public Safety PIO has been posted for, and, and will assist in the strategic nature of this, of this objective. A working group will be established in the police department to review our existing and future policies, gaps in services, and we'll use this data to make process improvements and evaluate the current programs that are in the police department to see if they're really making a difference, see if they're really working, if they're doing what they intended, and you move forward from there. Couple other highlights, a crime prevention strategy map's been created, set for implementation in 2020. Couple of key points would be proactive business community communication about, about crime prevention, and then reduction in crime and disorder, and then expansion of regional collaboration with other partners. They also, the police department's also been working on expanding crisis training to all the officers. They'd like to be able to have that in effect in the next two years. And then, I was told by chief that the new basic police academy training's been delayed a little bit, but they have, they have developed that and currently, I'm talking about implementing that in the, in sometime in 2020 as well. And I think that's it. So, if anybody has any questions, our next step would be the strategic plan review and refine in 2019, but if you have any questions on any of the things I talked about, I stand ready.
Vincent, thank you for the update report. Quiet council, any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Burton?
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you, Vincent.
Sure.
Well done. I know we met and discussed a little bit about this, and I love the direction that you're taking this, and, you know, little tweaks that you're doing to it, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Along that note, I, I had the opportunity to spend part of my Friday afternoon with Vincent, talk about the plan, vision casting, talking about where things are headed. If council members haven't had the chance to do that yet, I'd really encourage you to get on his schedule.
Right.
Vincent's a great addition to the city.
Agreed.
And I think it's, it's important for us as council to dive into that and have kind of a very candid and free-flowing conversation about our feelings on the plan, areas of improvement, things that we'd like to see in terms of these reports. It's unfair to staff to come and kind of, feel like it's a conference where you're presenting a lot of information. We have to take in a lot of this information, and one of the things I applaud Vincent is that he's open to that feedback. If there's ways that we can get this, it's more digestible, so it's not drinking out of a fire hose. I think he and the mayor are open to that, so I think those conversations with him one on one are important to do, something I'd encourage council members if they haven't been with him to, to follow through on that.
Right.
Yeah, I look, I look forward to it. It's, it's a, it's a interesting to get the perspective of the, of the council at all times, so.
We're all different.
Yeah.
Interesting. Any other questions?
Vincent.
Hey, thank you, Vincent. Appreciate that important update.
Thank you.
Council item 7C, we gave you a little heads up end of last week. We did this in the spring, kind of lost sight of it. I apologize, but we're going to use these workshops for the, if there's something of, of unique interest or importance for those outside agencies that we're each assigned to, now's the time to kind of give a little quick heads up on those. So, if you have something, great. If you don't, no worries, but Councilman Cavanagh?
Thanks, Councilman Borden. I'm happy to start. I, the Transportation Commission has some vacancies, so if you know, I know, as council members, we often find ourselves talking to people in the community that have a desire to serve and to be involved, so there is an opportunity there. If you know anyone, I'd encourage them to apply and meet with the mayor about that. Transportation Commission meetings typically happen on the first Monday of the month. We had a holiday on this Monday, so we did not meet our regular scheduled time, and I was unable to attend the rescheduled meeting. I also sit on the VRT Executive and General Committee. We've had a lot of presentations from VRT that pretty much summarize a lot of the dialogue that's happening at the board level, but I, I guess I'll, I'll place maybe for consideration for us as a councilor, for the president, if the mayor was trying to talk to her. Meridian is the only city that participates on VRT that does not have the mayor involved at the executive level or at the general level. One of the things that I'm finding is that more and more requests are befalling on staff to help or participate, and as a member of the council who oversees budget and policy, it's always been a struggle for me to provide any type of direction or feedback about staff. I know that's one of the reasons why the mayor's talked about her involvement on MDC is the kind of requests that fall on staff, so this may be, I know we sometimes look at the new fiscal year to redo liaison assignments, it may be prudent at that time for the mayor to either replace Councilmember Mylum or myself, if she is willing and able, so that we eliminate some of those challenges that happen with staff involvement. We, as the council, continue to look at public transit, I think having her involvement in that correlation with, with staff becomes much, much, much more important.
Mr. Burton?
I am on the Board Directors for Compass, and currently, we're working on, have been discussing Communities Emotion 2.0, implementation, implementation of grants and project development, and it's very complex and very, there's a lot, there's a lot to it, but, you know, funding and, and performance measures, so the last meeting I went to spent heavily talking about Communities Emotion 2.0, and so, if you have any further questions in regard to this, I'd be more than happy to answer some questions for you. Also, on a side note, one second, sorry. Tomorrow is the annual Parks Tour tomorrow night, and so, I invite you all to join us in the Parks Tour to go see some highlights with Steve's team and what they've put together, and it'll be, it's always a treat, and I'm excited to be there, and I invite you all to join us as well.
Sure.
So, I am assigned to the Rural Fire District, and I think that that is the perfect assignment for me, because every time, I missed this last one, but every time I go, I am not stressed at the end of it. It was not the case with VRT, but it's just some old dudes who just get the job done and don't quabble over things, they just handle their assignment. So, but because I did miss the last one, chief, did I miss anything that was noteworthy? Okay. All is well there.
Hey. Little Roberts?
Air Quality Board, and Air Quality Board has made some huge strides in figuring out how to find those people that reside in, within Ada County and license their vehicles outside and thus avoid emissions testing. And so, there's been some tricks and some things that have happened that they find it necessary, like cars that are in Florida or places like that, but we've got a lot of residents in this area that vote in this area, that license their cars at summer cabins or things like that, and so, they've made some huge strides. At one point, they thought it was over 20,000, and it's looking more like it's about 12,000 cars that do that at this point. And then the other thing that they have cracked down on, and I think we'll probably see something substantial here in the next month or so, is those that have done things to their cars, to their vehicles, that make it them no longer, so they won't pass the test, so they don't take the test, and that they've modified their vehicles, and then, and so, we're going to probably see another several thousand cars, vehicles. It's primarily trucks along those lines that will be required to un-modify and pass the tests.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ballmer?
Question for you. So, so are you saying that if the revenue would increase to local transportation entities if emissions testing was eliminated?
No, actually, the opposite. By making sure that they are complying, will bring in those revenues.
They would just, I'm sorry, I'm just trying.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, it's actually increased revenues by those that are not licensed here, that need to be licensed here, by about 12,000 cars.
That's a lot of money.
ACHD and Air Quality Board will both receive more revenue.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Question for Councilmember Roberts. If, it's my recollection, I, I think I left the Air Quality Board just about a year ago, and I know that they were in the process of implementing a new software tool. I've heard secondhand, there's been maybe some logistical challenges. I'm just curious if they have been resolved, and are some of the operational challenges at the Air Quality Board improving and moving forward?
Councilman Cavanagh, that is correct. There have been a lot of challenges with that update. It is my understanding, we were reported, it was reported to the board at the last meeting, that they were in the process of running the tests and reports, and were just about ready to implement. Next Monday, we should be on schedule. I have not heard anything different to, for them to report that it is up and running and set to go is what the, the last board report was.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
If Councilmember Little Roberts is able to, once that is implemented, maybe as a courtesy, let the entire council just know about that piece.
Absolutely, would be happy to.
So, great reminder. We'll do this monthly. If there's something big going on, obviously, share it, but you don't have to wait for the, the workshop, so if you go to one of your board meetings and some big topic of interest that may be coming before us, or we need to weigh in on, shoot an email, kind of heads up to everybody. We kind of do that every now and then, but it's never a bad idea to keep all of us in the loop when you hear something going on, even if it's just an FYI, I've seen everyone do it every now and then, so, those are, those are important to get. I'm, I'm an alternate all over the place, so I don't have an, an update, quite frankly.
We can find a place.
I'm the spare. So, we're going to, I'm reaching out to see areas of, of internal liaison and, and boards that people maybe haven't been on, that they have interest on, that makes sense to rotate. Some departments we keep for two years, some we don't, but that'll take place in October, so in September, we'll be reaching out and seeing what interests everybody and, and where we can all serve, and kind of rotate around, get engaged in the city in different capacities, so stay tuned for that. Future meeting topics?
Mr. President?
Cavanagh?
One, appreciate Vincent's comments about the, the mayor early on. Perhaps afterwards, we could all get together and, and do something as a, as a body for the, for the mayor's family, and then not necessarily knowing when she's going to be back in, in capacity, it would be great sometime shortly after she's back to provide an update to the council about the Government Accountability Officer, what progress is being made, what plans are coming or forthcoming from her office related to that particular position.
Anything else? Okay, on item 9, we've got to make an amendment to it that I failed to see at the start. The executive session, there's two other subsections with all these sections of subsections, sections to add. So, I will first move to amend the agenda to title item 9 to be an executive session, pursuant to Idaho State Code 74206, 1A, 1B, in addition to everything else, so amend to add A and B. So, and, and I thought so too, but the, down below, it's 206A, 1A. Sections of subsection sections, so we missed an AB below the 1A, A of the AB, so.
Got it. I'll second that.
Moving seconded to amend the agenda to clarify that executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, thank you. Okay, item 9 would be executive session.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I move that we move into executive session per Idaho State Code 74-206-1D, 74-206-1J, and 74-206A, 1A, and 1B.
Second.
And, and inclusive of the 1A and 1B that we just added.
1A and 1B, thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Moving seconded to go into executive session, no discussion. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.